One million eight hundred and ten thousand, in line with the sales and income evidence that we do have for Vanguard. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Joe, do you want, have any comments?
So, I mean, the only comment I would make regarding the cap rate comment is each commercial arena, and I think Joe acknowledges, has a different set of cap. I would, I would agree that cap rates on hotel motels is a higher, a higher number. But when you deal in some of these other arenas, if we were looking back at, for example, the last applicants, that it is a lower number. So, just FYI.
Anybody got any questions for Joe or Chris Stafford?
What were the, um, the three, trying to find them now?
Seven.
Yeah, you had a couple of sales in here.
So, I apologize if I'm interrupting anybody. I've got the volume on my phone.
Oops, I'm sorry.
And I, I can't, if somebody's asking me a question, I can't hear.
Okay. This question is for Joe, just trying to identify the last four properties on page seven. I mean.
And, Madam Chairperson, Commissioner Messer, is that from the Vanguard?
Yes.
And I, I don't apologize that, I've been out of, out of the office all week, and then with the change in the, in the time, I didn't bring everything with me. So, I'm not sure, all the data that you're going to ask regarding that, uh, my, my comments fall more around being able to support the work that Vanguard did, that they were accurate. And Mr. Stafford brings up some great questions. Uh, I really wish he'd have been there in 2019 to bring those questions up when Mr. Ailer, the President of Vanguard, gave his presentation. I don't recall all the comments that were made and, you know, or, you know, regarding all of this. And so, kind of at a disadvantage, three years down the road here, would have enjoyed having, uh, the home stays income as part of that valuation. It wasn't. And so, we get three years down the road, and, you know, a- as Mr. Stafford went on to discuss, you know, there, we have a model. It catches, you know, a, a large chunk of the properties very accurate, accurately. But there are, are outliers. It could be lower, it could be higher. With this property specifically, it could be either one. It could be spot on. But what I want to point out is the, the accuracy that Vanguard had, and, uh, the slideshow that we presented earlier, and it's the same, there's no difference from what Ms. Waller sent to before, other than I paged numbered this one here, because I don't have my slideshow in front of me to put on top, on, on the screen there. But it would be Dickinson Hotel Sales Ratio. And so, following the recommendation that Vanguard had given us, during 2019, there were two apartments, or two, excuse me, hotel sales, because we're speaking to, to the home stay here. Uh, one of those was for a little more than tru- true and full value, one of them was for a little less. The median, and we worked towards median, as Ms. Waller will tell you, was a 100.5%. So, based on these two data points, Vanguard nailed it. I mean, you can't get any closer to 100%, which is our valuation target, and we do get, uh, a little leeway down to 90. But I mean, when, when you want to know how accurate Vanguard's, uh, assessment was, or their recommendation, this is it. And in contrast there, you see what the, the home stay is asking for on their, uh, application for abatement. So, they're, they're well outside of the range of what these two sales were. And then, as far as further accuracy, uh, the last page, uh, page 18, are the apartments. And, and so, all of the apartments for 2019 and 2020 sold for less than the 100% ratio, so they actually sold for more than their assessed value. And in 2021, half of them were, were stronger yet, and then there were a couple that were just above. I do want to note that the, the highest, a little blue dot there, if it would have sold for 12,000, or it would have been at 100%. So, a very low value property that easily affected, affects the ratio by any difference in value. So, I mean, the accuracy on the recommendation Vanguard give with, gave was just phenomenal. We were very happy with, with what they did. And then, of course, uh, no changes because of COVID in 2020, but that, for this property would be for another time. So, uh, we've got that to point to. I'll, I also want to call out that the State Tax Commission, State Board, uh, has a set of guidelines for its assessors and tax directors. Guideline 26, uh, suggests using a gross income multiplier. We've been talking about a cap rate. Cap rates are very accurate. They're, they're great for lenders, uh, because there's a lot of risk on the lender who's lending 70, 80% on this. For ad of law and taxation, we're looking at how much taxes a property should pay to support their fire, their police, their roads. And so, the accuracy maybe doesn't need to be the same for what we're doing here as it is for a lender who's got that kind of exposure. But the, the data before you there, and I don't have a page here to show, like I said, it's in the binder that I forgot to bring, apologize for that. But the, these two sales had a, uh, uh, gross income multiplier of 1.6 and 1.9. So, they were on the lower end of the range, but other additional information we had, uh, supplied to us showed a, a range from, from the mid to high ones, up to the mid fours. And the value that the, uh, the home stay has on it right now would support the gross income multiplier of a three. So, we fall within that range too. So, I mean, we've got several data points that suggest that the recommendation made, that the true and full value is accurate and supportable, and not outside, uh, the typical, you know, first standard deviation, if you will. And I mean, we're getting into the assessor jargon now.
So, um, why isn't some of this data provided for them when they're, when we're work, you're working together with the abatements?
Uh, the, the information that Mr. Stafford's asking for is specifically Vanguard's, all, I mean, they, they were given what you have here.
Okay.
And so, they have that, but he has the additional questions that I can't answer because I didn't do the work.
Okay.
And so, would have to get in contact with Mr. Ailer, wasn't able to do that in a timely manner. I mean, he's got to go back in his records and find that. But specifically, the, Mr. Stafford suggests that I was asking for time to get that. It was actually time to, to pull this slide up, because, uh, if you had an opportunity to watch the, the video, Commissioner Oderman was there, requested this slide for the apartments, which came first. He had had to leave for, for family commitment, wasn't there. So, I just wanted to give, uh, his recommendation for that to this property here as well. So, that was what I wanted, the additional time to put this slide together for, for Commissioner Oderman, the other commissioners as well, to show that there was support from what Vanguard did, and that they were accurate in their recommendation.
So, the non-profitable ones?
May I respond to, uh, yes, sorry, I did not mean to interrupt the Commissioner.
No, go ahead, you're okay.
I was just wondering if I could respond to some of Mr. Hirschfeld's points, but if you've still got a question for him, I'm premature.
Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, so, Mr. Hirschfeld has raised three things that I want to, to bring up. First of all, uh, the gross income multiplier. Um, the two sales that occurred in 2018 had gross income multipliers of 1.6 and 1.9. Uh, Mr. Hirschfeld has said that he's got data showing gross income multipliers that go as high as four, but he hasn't provided that to this commission, nor did he provide it to the city, nor has he provided it to me in any of our conversations. It's, it's purely hypothetical until there's actually a data point to support that. Regardless, uh, if you use the gross income multiplier of 1.6 on our subject property, you get an assessment of about 2.1 million. Use a gross income multiplier of 1.9, you get up to about 2.5 million. Both of those are much lower than the, uh, assessment of 3.5 billion. And if you want to stick me with a $2.5 million assessment today, because that matches the gross income multiplier of the sales, I'd be thrilled with it. Um, with respect to the sales themselves, um, Mr. Hirschfeld noted that they, they came in right at the median, and that's great. Uh, that means that the model worked for those two hotels valued, uh, which sold at about 17 grand a room, and at about 8 grand a room, or assessed at 42 grand a room. Uh, those two sales, consistent with the assessment, a little higher or a little lower, uh, does not mean that our $42,000 a room assessment is accurate. It just means that those two were accurate. Uh, uh, Mr. Hirschfeld stated that he wished that we had brought up some of these points in 2019, and if I may be perfectly candid, uh, I've represented clients who have gone through the informal process prior to filing a formal application for abatement, and I've had clients that have declined to go through the informal process prior to applications for abatement. When we decline to go through the informal process, we hear, where were you three years ago? Go through the process, we hear, you were here three years ago, why are you here again? There is nothing correct that the taxpayer can do with, with respect to the informal process. If we participate, we're asked why we're here again. If we fail to participate, we're asked why we didn't participate. Uh, it's a lose-lose. Um, and I don't think it has any bearing on the actual question, which is what is true and full value of the property as of February 1st, 2019? Thank you.
And, Madam Chairperson, if I can respond to that, I mean, simply, uh, for, for this very reason. I mean, he's asking for a value on his property located on one of the premier locations in Dickinson along the interstate there, a newer property, to be valued with the same consideration, one that overlooks, uh, uh, well, no longer BJ Services in Halliburton. But, I mean, that's the location, one of the sales, right next to Max. So, I mean, not a premier location, a low amenity hotel. And the other one was the Comfort Inn, so, you know, much older, you know, without the amenities and everything that goes with an old, old, uh, hotel. So, he's, he's trying to say his isn't worth any more than that, and, you know, and he has nothing to prove that. I mean, that's kind of where we're at, that catch 22, how much information do you have? Well, the information I have is with, the, the sales that I do have, is that we were spot on. He's trying to throw as much, you know, cloud upon this valuation as possible to the benefit of his client, and that's understood. Uh, I, I disagree that, you know, not supplying the information that you can initially, uh, is, is to their downfall. I think the more information that you provide upfront, the more accurate my valuation can be. I mean, it's, it's quite possible that if his property's worth as little as he thinks it is, that, that would have played into this valuation, and he may have had a lower valuation. On the other hand, it might have played into a higher valuation. We can do the what-if all day long, but I, I, I show you what I have. This is the support I have.
I guess that's.
Was the non, oh, sorry, Neil.
Oh, go ahead.
Was the non-profitable ones, those were taken off? That Mr. Stafford talks about?
Uh, I, I think his concern is that when Vanguard's gave their opinion of value, which is, you know, their, their, their assessment of it, that they should, more weight should have been placed on those two, or minimum of two sales that had negative incomes. The, the, the problem with negative incomes on an income approach is that you're then saying that it has negative value, and we're supposed to pay them for them. And that's not accurate. There's still value in the land. And so, at that point, the, the income approach really has no bearing on the value of the property at all. Quite possibly, it means that that property needs to be razed and no longer razed, R-A-Z-E-D, you know, destroyed, and returned to, to just, to a lot, which would still have value. And, and so, it, it's quite typical in the appraisal field that information like that maybe runs in the back of your head. I think the comments mean that if these sales don't come out like they did, say that median on those two sales was 125, that, well, shoot, we should have placed a little more weight on the income, and we, we could be a little bit lower. I think that's kind of where those comments are going. That's how I would have written it up. I probably wouldn't have used them, or put a lot of weight on them either. And, you know, it, it's an opinion of value that they gave, and, and their opinion worked out fabulously on both the apartments and the hotels. I mean, you, you can't overlook that. They, if we were at 125%, 200%, absolutely, Mr. Stafford's spot on that we should have done something different. But that's not how the data turned out.
And just to follow up to my question to you.
If I may make one comment on that.
Go ahead, Mr. Stafford.
I, I, I believe that in Mr. Hirschfeld's explanation of, uh, whether or not to consider those, uh, unprofitable hotels, there's being a conflation of mass appraisal and individual appraisal. I agree, individual money-losing hotel, you might as well blame management, or it might well have a different highest and best use, and need to be torn down and replaced with something else. But when Vanguard was building its model, it wasn't looking at valuing each hotel individually, it was looking at ostensibly, what is the entire market like? Do that occupancy percentage from the good hotels and the bad hotels? Because overall, the hotel profit, hotel industry in Dickinson is profitable, or else there would be no hotels in Dickinson. So, you look at the whole group, how many rooms are there available? How many people stayed there? What were they willing to pay on average? In the good hotels and the bad hotels, sure, the failing hotels will have a lower occupancy percentage. The good hotels will have a higher occupancy percentage, but you average that out to figure out how many people are showing up in the first place. And by ignoring the data from the failing hotels, without a question for why it's appropriate to do so, and with, I think you had the opportunity since January 31st to contact Vanguard and ask why they made that decision. And there's been no effort, an answer. And Mr. Hirschfeld is here today with speculation about why they might have done it. We could have had the answer by now. It's been three months, but for whatever reason, we still don't have that answer, and I can't provide that answer. Only the assessor can. Only Vanguard can. All we know is that they ignored market data and didn't give us a reason. Thank you.
And, Madam Chairman, if I may, just to, Chairperson, I'm sorry, to, to comment to that is, i- it's not pertinent. I mean, Vanguard came up with the information they did. His statements there, you know, about looking at all the data is accurate. But to be candid with you, candid to the, the continuation of this process wherever it may go, i- in my, what, 11 or 12 years I've been here, if a property doesn't return their income to me, it means they're doing well. It's the ones that don't return their, or that do return their income to me that are struggling. And that's just, just been my observation. And, and so, when they're told, don't share your information, and I, there, there's 22 hotels in town, and if we got three that were usable, and two, maybe three, and we can speculate all day on that, we're at, what, 15, 20% return? So, i- if he doesn't like the data, supply us with the data. It's, it's quite.
But you have the data. Vanguard has the data.
Well, the, the, the request went out to all 22 hotel owners, but there was a maximum of five that returned it, and his was not one of them. So, the, the data's limited, so he's not happy with what the data showed, even though they didn't participate. And so, now he's looking for something to, different to happen.
Minimum of five. We don't know how many Vanguard declined to consider. Minimum five.
Is that true?
A, a minimum of five, yes. Three that were used, the two that weren't. That's 25%. So, we can speculate the rest of the day. That was the data that they had. They made an opinion on that. We're required to do that by the second week of, of April every year. Well, we can't leave it open-ended, waiting for somebody to supply us data.
Just moving on from that topic to the one I had asked you about before, and the reason I'd asked for those last four, uh, sales in 2018, because there was a disparity in the, uh, per unit number, I had an assumption, you confirmed it, that the sale for, that had a value of 29.5 per room was the Red Roof Inn. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, if you go and take a, I mean, just walk through the halls of Red Roof Inn, and walk through the halls of, uh, Mr. Stafford's property he's representing, there's a significant difference, uh, that would address the issues that Mr. Tibble, uh, brought forth before. That would address the, the, the cost issue of replacement cost. I mean, he's head and shoulders from evaluation, cosmetically, structurally, and those, those kind of things. So, uh, that's why I was asking, because there was almost 50% difference in per room or per key, however you want to identify it, value, so, uh, and that number is still higher than what he's requesting. So, he, uh, Mr. Stafford's requesting 28.3 per room, I believe, is what I wrote in my notes, and, uh, that the Red Roof was 29.5. So, anyway, my, that's my only comment.
And, uh, Commissioner Messer, that's an astute observation, that, again, the data we had probably tended to show the lower quality properties, which Mr. Stafford's, when he's representing, is certainly not. So, it's superior to just about everything, everything that we've seen.
And what was yours, what was that, um, per room, 42.5? Fourth, or 42,500?
I believe that'd be correct, yes.
Uh, if I may, uh, interject once more, um, Hirschfeld provided me with the property record card for the, uh, Red Roof Inn, and the property record card, of course, for my property. Both of them are graded at a quality of 4 plus 10, which leads to a multiplier of 1.64. Uh, what exactly that means is a little obscure based on the Vanguard system, but what I can tell you is that based on, and the City of Dickinson's own analysis, the Red Roof and my property are of the same quality.
Are we ready for a motion? Okay, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I would move that Stark County accept the City of Dickinson's true and full value for the home stay, uh, property for the year 2019 of $3,523,900.
I'll second.
This is for 2019?
Yes.
Okay, had a motion in a second. Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And, Madam Chairperson, Commissioners, thank you.
Should we just have the one on here? Okay. We need, um, do we want to accept the bids? Sir, Alan?
So, we reviewed the paving bids, and, uh, no math errors, so the, uh, low bid for the sum of all three projects was Mayo Construction, $1,123,724, um, and zero cents. So, we would recommend awarding to, to Mayo. Um, you look at the subdivisions, they were pretty much what we had estimated. 116th was a little bit higher. I think we were sort of anticipating a little better, uh, production on 116th, but, um, as a total, it's about 5% over what our estimate was, but that's pretty reasonable, actually. So, we.
We can't segregate these out in?
No, it was, it was solicited as one contract.
Why do we do that, solicit out of, does one, when we have such lower ones?
We essentially wanted to divvy them up to see what the unit prices are for each subdivision, essentially. So, invent that one of the subdivisions, or 116th, was exceptionally high, we would eliminate it, but they're all reasonably close to what our estimate was.
I mean, what was the difference between Mayo and whoever was next? What was?
It was about $40,000.
From the?
From the low bid to the second low bid.
Forty, you said?
42,000, roughly.
In, uh, in your judgment, that's pretty competitive bidding, isn't it?
Yeah. I mean, the first and the second, within 42,000, so they were, you know, within 4% of each other. That's pretty competitive.
In my, my view, that's good. But they're darn competitive.
Yeah, you know, as, as the engineer kind of tells me, they were looking at the same set of plans, and there wasn't much confusion on what the scope of work was. There's always going to be an oddball bid that, bidder that throws in a number, to be honest with you, but when you get the low bids that are close like that, it tells me everyone's looking at the same set of plans.
So, it would be in order then to, uh, the low bid?
Mayo Construction.
What was that total?
So, my motion, uh, include that number. Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Just one real quick follow-up question. So, I, I'm just struggling a little bit why we wouldn't have, and Al, I don't, if you could chime in, I know you, you, when you put it together, you put it together. I understand that. Uh, is that typically how you would have done a, a set of projects this way?
I was kind of curious to see where these, these subdivisions come in. You know, that 116th is kind of straight-up paving, but, and, um, the numbers are where they are.
Okay.
And we've got some numbers from Northern in May, we took from Islanis Paving. The oil has considerably gone up now, so I think all in all, it's a pretty good number.
So, it's your recommendation we go forward? Okay.
Roll call vote, Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Um, next, we have the, the policy to talk about. Ken, you had put, or Mr., or Commissioner Zander, you had put the item of the HR policy on discussion?
Thanks for bringing that up. I, I brought it up because it's one of those items that, and I think there's others that over the past months have been tabled, and, um, and I'm just, my point being, if we're tabling something, we're tabling it for a reason, but that.
It's still out there. And so, my only point is, is that, is that I know staff and at least one commissioner had put a lot of effort into this, and so, I, I'm just asking that we address this for action at our June meeting.
Okay. We will make sure it's on the agenda. Anybody else from, want to speak?
Clarence Tuohy, Stark County resident. Uh, last year, there was an issue brought up about longevity that was supposed to be paid back by the end of December, and my understanding is that it was, not, everything was paid back. And I was just kind of wondering where this is at, because it's the middle of the following year already.
There was a motion in a second made by this board, and then I think you could talk to Ms. Inglestead about that, as it was followed through with this board.
As far as?
Of the motion in the second forum to be paid back. And I think Ms. Ms. Inglestead is taking it up, is taking care of it.
Okay, good enough.
Or you could talk to me privately, if you'd like.
Right.
Because I'd be happy to visit with you about it.
Well, this year was brought up, where it was supposed to get paid back by the end of the year, and it is, and it's.
We, we know what your point of being up here is, Clarence, and I'll be happy, and I'll make a motion that we adjourn, and I'll be happy to sit down with you and, uh, the state attorney, if you'd like.
I, I guess it's something that the public should know.
Yeah.
And there hasn't been anything in the public.
Well, I'll go to the Dickinson press with it, if.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
Let's just address Mr. Tuohy's, um, thing. So, yeah, the, the point I want to make is there was four longevity's issues. Was there? Was there four?
Four.
So, we are missing one, and that's obviously, uh, that, that conversation had in that way. But just so that the public knows that the, the motion was passed and, uh, there is one left to deal with.
Right.
Okay.
I, I really don't think we needed to save in that, but.